Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting, Thursday, November 1st, 2018. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is the head of one nation, and to God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. Opening comments. Ms. Lombard?
Yes. I want to commend the Fire Department, Police Department, and Public Works for the water safety of the drowning we had. Their attempts to save that individual was just unbelievable. It was a very rough season. And we had the rescue team with their full gear and they watched the Zodiac and the jet ski. And it was amazing. They found the individual. Very sorry for his death. And it was just happened. We had, and I want to thank the firing fire departments that came in and assisted in the hunt. The city of Beverly sent their rescue squad. The city of Lynn, Swampsket, I think Bob Bullhead was here. They all came and helped and assisted in the, hopefully it was a rescue, but it was not. But they're to be commended. That's all I have.
Thank you. Last night being Halloween, there were many times where the police were driving by my house. I know they're around town. They did a great job.
Yes.
Fire Department did a great job. There were loads and loads of kids going down there. The Tiny House did a great job from four to six. I thought that was well done.
Yeah.
I was over there with Mr. Butler and myself went. It was great. It was a good night.
It was very nice. And I have to commend the police, too. They did an excellent job down in my area. I sent a cruiser. It was just a busy section. And they were following the kids and the kids trick or treating were very polite and very nice. It was just, we had a lot of, a lot of kids show up. It was amazing. It was a great Halloween. Nothing, no incidents at all, which is usually great. And the young people of the town, they should be commended because they were very polite, extremely polite and thank you. And it was very, very well, you know, nice. And Chief Dwyer, his team, they did a great job. Having the cruisers out there and the police officers, especially with the, you know, pitch black and actually they had lights on in my area, the cruisers, but you know, so the people, and I think the cars of the town, everyone stopped from driving. It was excellent. Kids had a good time, I think. I still miss the town hall decorations and the haunted house up here and I guess, you know.
Until way back.
Yeah, well, it used to be fun for the kids.
Fun.
I also want to congratulate Matthew Vendetta, the Call Fire, who just graduated from the Fire Academy. He was, that's huge to go through the academy. And he's on the Call Fire Department, which is huge for, we've got a great team in those call, call men. When we have a fire, they respond. And they're all well-trained and they do an excellent job, you know, as well as the regular fire department. That's all I have.
Good. Congrats to Matthew from the Board, of course. Approving the minutes of October 18th, 2018.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the minutes of October 18th, 2018, and the executive session minutes from October 4th, 2018. I so moved that, Mr. Chairman.
If I may, Ms. Lombard, could we stop off on the October 4th, the executive session minutes? I want to ask Council about the minutes.
Okay, that's fine.
So we just go with the 18?
Go with, just, I'll just move and we, we.
And we can approve them. We'll approve them next meeting?
Next meeting.
All right, thank you. I'll second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Citizens Forum?
Good evening. I'd like to talk for a couple of minutes about my granddaughter's going to high school. She just started high school. And in doing so, I bought her a book, which I'm going to hand to you guys momentarily. It's called Visionary Women. And it features stories about Rachel Carson, the environmentalist, Jane Goodall, the woman who studied wildlife in Africa, Alice Waters, who was a founder of the modern organic food movement. And most of all, it features a woman named Jane Jacobs. Jane Jacobs is not as famous as many women are, but she was involved many years ago with saving Greenwich Village. You may know that in the 1950s, a guy named Robert Moses wanted to put a four-year, four-lane highway right through the middle of Greenwich Village. He thought it was a terrific idea. He thought it was needed. He thought transportation was important, that it would help the city grow and prosper. But the people who lived in Greenwich Village understood the value of the community that they lived in. And they thought it was worth fighting for that community and to resist a very, very powerful man in a powerful institution. Robert Moses was not somebody who was used to being told what he couldn't do. And he was determined to put that highway right through Washington Square Park to get from one end of Manhattan to the other. But Jane Jacobs got together with her neighbors and organized her neighbors and worked together and went to their elected officials and made the argument that Greenwich Village was something that was irreplaceable. You could not put it anyplace else. It had a culture all of its own. It had a way of life that was important to the people who lived there. But also, it was important for it to be there as a possibility for others to see. So over a few years, informing their elected officials, working with, with others, they organized and were able to show their representatives that the representatives should be on their side. And because they were listened to, and because they worked together and they had the unity of the community to stand up and say, what is ours is ours. It has value. Robert Moses wants to put a few thousand cars through the middle of the park every day. We don't think that's a good idea. So I bought this book for my granddaughter. And I'm now going to contribute it to the Nahat Public Library. And I would advise young women, middle-aged women, older women, and just as importantly, men, to, to read about what a person can do and what a community can do if they work together and they resist someone from outside wanting to come in and destroy their community for their own purposes. So my recommendation is Visionary Women by Andrea Barnett. It's a good read. Thank you.
In case you didn't know, that was Jim Walsh. He didn't give his name. Jim, that was great. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Jen McCarthy. I'm here as a member of the Recreation Commission tonight. And I just wanted to thank Heather Goodwin. She came to us at the beginning of the spring and asked if she could donate her time and paint the little recreation shack that we have down at Flash Road Playground. And she worked all summer long. I know her husband, Jason, came down and helped her. And I think her daughters did as well. And they have just taken our little shed and they've transformed it into rainbows and bears and fish and clouds. And it's just beautiful. So on behalf of the Recreation Commission, I'd like to thank her and her family for donating their time to make our shed beautiful.
What's your name again?
Heather Goodwin. And her sister.
That was funded by the Nahat Cultural Council.
Yes. She did get a grant from the Nahat Cultural Council to help fund that. So, but it was a family affair. So we appreciate it.
Thank you. And Heather, good job. Many ti, I'm down there practically daily with my dog and trying to figure out who did that. So congratulations. Great job. Thank you, Jen.
Is she, lives on Water Road?
Raisi Hill, yeah.
Raisi, okay. Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah.
Thank you. That's it.
Move, Mr. Chairman, that we write a letter to Heather and thank her for her.
No move. Let's just have it done.
Just have Tony, maybe.
Please.
Already wrote it down.
Okay, excellent.
It is nice. On your next journey, you can go down and look at it.
Yes, I will. I didn't know it was done now.
Any other Citizen Forum? No? Okay. Three. New business. Approve Linda Peterson's new hire.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the part-time new hire appointment of Nancy Maddox, 190 Nahat Road, to fill the vacant position of Director, Director Assistant on the Council of Aging with the term expiring in June 30th, 2019. I so move.
I'll second. Discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Approve Nahat Veterans Association one-day liquor license.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a one-day liquor license for the Veterans Day luncheon event on November 11th at the Nahat Life Saving Station. So move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second. Discussion?
No, no discussion. Well, I think it's a great thing, honor the license, honor the veterans on that day. If you can stop down at the Legion and just say thank you, that would be nice to know.
Good, good. Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Approve student shot film. That's number D. Number, letter D.
Letter D. Three Cs. Uh, hang on, let me get that. Three D? I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a, the student shot film on November 9th at 3:00 PM on Willa Road. So move?
Second. Discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Town Administrator report, Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Would you like to talk about it? No, we don't need to. You got approved. But, okay, if you want to talk, we'll make time. She might, you might want to talk. You might want to talk.
Maybe you could tell a little bit about it?
Just tell a little bit about it. Give us your name. It's November 9th.
I'm Katherine Wallach. So we're shooting Friday, November 9th. I think from like 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM is sort of like the schedule we're working with right now. So Emerson College, if that's something you need to know.
Nice, nice. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Town Administrator?
The first on my list, Mr. Chairman, is MJS update, which MJS is the company that we selected for the Tudor Beach repair job. And at this point, all parties have signed the contract and Nahat has granted MJS a notice to proceed. The next step is a pre-construction meeting between MJS and our town engineer to discuss a start date, hours of operation, laydown area for materials, et cetera. And we expect activity in that area in the coming few weeks. But we'll know more after the construction meeting and we will be sure to notify neighbors in advance.
Okay. May I throw something in on that? Could you do me a favor? Get ahold of Brendan Wood with the Finance Committee?
Mm-hmm.
And ask them, they had asked that we put together a committee to oversee the constructions of the $41 million for the sewer system. Check into that. I know this isn't it, but I need, this, this is a construction. And they had asked me to ask for volunteers from Nahat, from Nahat to come up. And obviously, they'll go through you for appointment.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next on my list is paving. So we selected Aggregate Industries. We haven't, there hasn't been much paving in town, I think, for the last couple of years. They will be doing a one and a half inch mill and overlay. And they should be beginning work next week. And those, that's for sections of Ocean Street, Summer Street, and then Swallow Cave Road, Fennel Way, Sherman Ave., plus some, installing some new berm around town. Again, once we get specifics about where they'll be and when, we'll make sure that neighbors are notified. It should be about a couple of days for milling and then a couple of days for paving. So much-needed work and glad that that's going to be starting before it gets too cold.
Sure. Thank you.
Next is emergency preparedness. So this was, I just wanted to commend the DPW for how well they prepared for last weekend's Nor Easter. Luckily, the storm wasn't as bad as, as we expected, but they did make sure to have extra pumps on site. They cleared all our catch basins in advance and swept the streets and pumped down Bear Pond. So we were fully prepared for any of the conditions. Luckily, we, it wasn't too bad.
If I may, on, on this town, three town administrators ago, when I was a rookie, I asked that we have some kind of emergency plan in place for a storm. Like, why not have six pumps ready to go throughout the town, et cetera, et cetera. And then it hit. And Tony and, and Timmy Lowell have done a great job. There were actually were two pumps in back of the Public Works. And Mr. Lombard pointed it out to me and I went over and I asked him. And he said that we had rented them in our emerg, our emergency preparedness plan. So it's really nice to see that in effect. Good job.
Tim, Tim deserves all the credit for that.
Tim Lowell, thank you.
Yeah, those are, those are big giant pumps that could pump.
Oh, we'd need them.
You know, and it's the flooding at Willa Road, Foxher Road, that's, you know, the, it's the same areas, you know, especially if the water comes over, you know. And it's, I just look at the high tide now, it's, especially at the WAF, it's, you know, it's very close to the top of that seawall. And it's, we got to think down the road about hiring, you know, looking at it and get plans to increase the size of the wall going up. Because with these high tides coming in, especially a full moon and things like that, and it's like, probably come washing, washing in, you know. And that's, I like his idea of getting the pumps prior to the storm, you know. And those, those pumps were huge, the 10-inch, I think. And he's looking at, we should be maybe down the road purchasing one of these and have it here for us, you know.
We're in the process of.
Doing that?
Yeah. We, there's a chance that we might be able to utilize some FEMA funds on top of what was appropriated last town meeting. So we're just exploring those options.
The other thing I know is portable walls, actual walls. I'll get you the brochure. They've used them in Houston and around the country. And it's like a barrier to put them on top of some of these walls to prevent the water coming in, especially at Willa Road, you know, down along that night hole and prevent the rocks and the debris coming over to that golf course, you know.
Mm-hmm.
And I saw the brochure and I meant to, I meant to give it to you. I, I'm sorry, you know. And I'll get it to you because it's, it's brand-new technology. And we could put these, these things up in matter of small time. And it's, it prevents the flooding in some of these areas, especially where we have no seawall, you know, nothing, especially down on Castle Road, protecting Foxher Road and Castle Wall, and then Willa Road as well. I'll get you the brochure. We could, you know, take a look at purchasing some of these things down the road and maybe get ready for the April town meeting. I'll give that to you.
Okay.
Somebody just got this brochure and I looked at it. I asked him for another additional one, you know. He's going to get back to me. Give me the one so I can give it to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tiny House, we actually already, we already talked about it. It was a great event. There was a lot of, a lot of children came by and, God, handfuls and handfuls of candy. There was a lot of, a lot of older residents, too, without, without children came by to check out the house. And everybody was impressed. It's, they've been a good neighbor. I've heard a lot, they haven't, the folks that have stayed in the Tiny House haven't reported any complaints. And, you know, everybody's been, they've been good to us and we've been good to them. So it's, it's, it's worked out well.
Yeah, that was a great idea. I, I thought, you know, it's very nice.
And they're leaving next week, right? Is it next week, the 6th?
I think it's the following week.
Oh, okay.
And just a couple of, a couple of other pieces. I just wanted to mention that water bills, they went out Tuesday on the 30th, and they're going to be due November 29th. And also, our real estate tax bills were sent out today. And those are going to be due December 3rd.
December 3rd?
Yes. Oh, and I, one more thing, too, is we also launched a town hall Facebook page as part of trying to increase communication from town hall outward. We're taking a look at all of our tools that we have to get information out to the residents. So that was one of them. And we launched that this week and encourage folks to go on Facebook and like the page and follow it because we'll be, we're going to use that to get important information out to the town.
Good. Terrific. The Tiny House was very nice. The, there were a lot of people our age, Richie, our age, that were there when I, when I went over. They were really interested. They kept saying, can we walk through? And, you know. But like I was telling you, it was, it was stepped up. It'd be tough for, you know, older guys than us.
I went through it. It's, it's, it was an interesting concept, you know.
Oh, yeah. Very roomy.
Especially when Northeastern called me and they say, what are you doing when we put that house up there? I told him, that's the first of 20. They didn't appreciate that very much. We surprised them with that one, you know. But anyways, we got.
Ongoing business? Do you have any ongoing business you want to bring up, Richie?
Uh, no, I.
No, me neither.
Just have announcements here.
Closing announcements. I'll do the leaf.
Okay, sure.
Curbside leaf pickup will continue on the following days. Monday, November 5th, 19th, and 26th, Tuesday, November 13th. Please have leaves in biodegradable bags only. No open barrels, no twig branches or other debris. Bags must be out to the curb by 7:00 AM. And they are punctual. They go by my house 10 of 7 sometimes, 5 past 7. And they do a good job. Okay. 6B, winter parking ban. Got it, sir?
The winter parking ban, as usual, goes in December 21st through March 20th. Residents with hot chips that need to apply for a parking waiver can pick their, up their application from the Police Department on or after December 1st. So anyone that has a, you know, if they handicap or the parking is going to cause a problem, they're seniors and things like that, they can get a waiver, you know, so they can park across the house. Because part of the application, if we do have a snowstorm coming, they, they have to remove the cars from the street. And, you know, and it's usually tough areas, Little Nahat, of course, Bass Point, they, you know, they usually park in the schoolyard. But we've got to have, you know, those areas, especially, we should have the, after December 1st, we should have the fire chief go around just checking because to make sure he can get those engines down some of these small streets, you know, especially, again, Little Nahat and Bass Point, those are the congested areas. And they need to get, you know, it's going to be cleared because of those engines to get through a house fire in those areas. So would you have them check on that?
Absolutely.
I also like to have you, with the fire chief, go around and with all these problems with the gas and things like that, maybe set a program that we can have the fire chief go around with National Grid to show everyone where the shut-off valves are of the gas in case they need it. And then, you know, and to check these houses, too, at the same time, just a kind of a follow-up. There's a lot of these streets, if you notice, they have old cast iron pipes down there. And they're very, they're not as deep in the grid because of the ledge. And so when we have 18-wheelers and giant scenic cruisers with buses going down like Willa Road, Emerald Road, Valley Road, Ocean Street, Winter Street, these vehicles are heavy. And it just, it keeps snapping these pipes. Those pipes, both water, sewer, and gas lines. And you can see the brakes where, like Ocean Street and Valley and I see it, it looks like a checkerboard square where they dug up and they, they hot-top. We need to have them go through, and we need to go through with our Superintendent Public Works, and have them, ask them, request them to put a new pipe in. These old cast iron pipes, especially, we've got high-pressure lines now, ever since they come across the car's way. At Val, at Nahat Road and Castle Road, that building down there houses the high-pressure lines. And they're sending high pressure through these, these lines. And with all the brakes and the, and these 18-wheelers, we need to look at this traffic pattern and find out and maybe come up with the police chief of what we can cut down on the size of the trailers, especially the 18-wheeling buses going down these small streets. And the weight of these trucks are breaking these pipes. And I see it right in front of me. I mean, it's right, you know, if you look at the bottom of Ocean. Now, you're going to, you're going to hot-top Ocean, but you're not going to, you're going to stop at Valley Road. Am I correct?
Probably.
Probably you are.
I think so. I think so, yeah. I don't know if it's the north side or.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't go any further because that's where all the leaks are at, right down there. Okay? And that's, it just, these.
And you're probably better off looking at it before you hot-top.
Yeah, absolutely. We got to make sure that, you should notify all these people, especially, I don't, I don't want you hot-topping these roads. And then they come back and dig it up within six months, you know what I mean, after we, after we hot-top. And if they do the emergency, we've got to force them to hot-top that whole street. I mean, it's just, they just can't go in.
Tim checked. Tim had National Grid come and check.
Yeah.
For leaks and on the roads, on these roads that we.
Fennel Way is the one too, yeah.
Yeah, Fennel Way, it's so narrow up there. I just was up there, some of these streets I went down. They need to get Public Works up to trim all the trees on either side of, like Fennel Way, because it's so narrow. And they need to, you know, I would say, push back on some of the.
When they do Ocean Street, that's right off of Ocean, too.
Yeah.
Right? So, I mean. Right? So, I mean...
Well, they're going to grind it up first. Am I right? They send down the grinder first?
Yep.
Yeah. So...
There are potholes there onto Ocean, too.
Yeah, I... There's a lot of potholes.
We also have... We also put $10,000 aside and signed up Stan Tech to do a updated paving plan. I know that we used to have a paving plan for a long time, but it hasn't been updated in a while, so that's going to happen over the winter.
That's a good idea.
Yep. Remember, that was under Mark.
Mm-hmm.
When... Mark had a side work and...
Every single year, he had a couple of streets to do.
And...
That was well done.
Some of these town administrators missed that, you know what I mean? But anyways, the parking ban goes into effect and, of course, everyone knows, you know, it just helps the... If we do have a storm, to remove the cars so it's much easier for the plowing of Public Works. They've got the small trucks for the small areas and, of course, we've got two brand-new big dump trucks and they've got sanders on there and it's going to help the... Help keep the town...
And before you get to the next one, my two cents, because your new Mr. Barletter was, every year I bring up, when I go through Swampscut, they have the blue lights. And when the blue lights are on, that means it's going to snow and you've got to get your car off. I can remember many winters, especially last winter, having my car in the yard when it was 70 degrees out. Remember? Some days it... And I brought up the fact, maybe we should do a blue light thing. And three town administrators ago said he'd look into it. Not that I'm asking because it's already in place. And the chief, I talked to the chief and he said it would be tough to get around town and get the cars off the road, you know, if the lights were on. I don't believe it, but it's something... It's something I'd like to look into down the road. It'd save all of this...
It's just the entrance...
But it...
Blue... Extend out, the electricity's right there. Wouldn't take much to put a...
You put them at certain parts in town. Just a thought, because you've got enough to do on your plate. Let's do the next one, Mr. Lombard.
Yes, sir.
That's yours. Veterans Day, sir.
Okay. In the observation of Veterans Day, the town hall will be closed on Monday, November 12th. And, of course, there's a November 11th, there's a function down at the Coast Guard Station and veterans, if you can go out and visit and stop by the veterans and thank all the veterans for their service to the country, it'd be great. And, oh, by the way, thank you very much for putting up the new flags. They look fantastic and the lights are on.
Mm-hmm.
That's good. We get to bring those flags, especially down that area, of course, they blow on... They've got to be changed out and when they frayed and ripped and, you know...
And why did that happen? Because you asked it to be happened.
Well, no, no, no. I...
That was very good.
Oh, no, no, no. I just, you know, things like that, you know.
It should have. As soon as you mentioned, I went by and I said, "Jeez, Richie's right."
Well, it's just the flags, you know, we, you know, the armed services and Veterans Day's coming. I just want to...
Make it look good.
Something, you know...
Again, I'll have... I got to give credit to our DPW because they had...
Lowell again. Good.
They had already...
Audit the flag.
Had already received the flags by the time I relayed your message, your request, so...
And I see the lights are working on the flags. That's huge, you know?
That's good.
Nice. Looks nice.
Nice.
Okay.
And the Legion is what time?
I think it's from 10 o'clock in the morning, Veterans Day.
Like all day?
Eh, till about 5:00, yeah.
Till about 5:00. Okay. Okay. Thank you. I'll do early voting, okay?
Sure, go ahead.
The last remaining early voting day is tomorrow, November 2nd, from 8:00 to 12:30. The general election will be Tuesday, November 6th, with polls opening at 7:00 AM and closing at 8:00 PM. Voting takes place in the Council on Aging Room in the rear of the town hall. Seven. Richie?
Yeah, I got it. Anything else? Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to adjourn into executive session under Mass General Laws 38, Section 21, to discuss the potential purchase and exchange lease of value of real property if the chairman declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiate position with the town. Vote regarding whether to go into executive session is expected and votes may occur during the executive session. I so move that.
I second. And as chairman, I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the town. Roll call vote. Mr. Lombard?
Aye.
Taylor? Aye. Unanimous vote. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, people.